All right. Good evening, everyone. It is five o'clock on Tuesday, December thirteenth, so officially call this meeting to order. We have all current board members present and then welcome to all of our guests. Most notably, our three elementary principals. So glad that you're here spreading our with us. Here about some amazing things they're from our school. So we'll start with, yeah, Dr. Lynn.
Sure. I'm here representing Dr. Borshane today to get a little overview where the elementary principals are super excited to share their work with all of you. Like I know you are really excited to tell the great things for happening in our schools. We only have an hour. We've asked each principal to take their remarks right around 10 minutes. And then there'll be, I mean, if you ask questions before you move to the next one, we're going to go through them in alphabetical order. So without, we're going to do them and invite.
All right. Dr. Bergen, how are y'all doing? Okay, we're super excited to be here. I wish the movie had purple. Purple's my favorite color and I feel like for bullish bullet images. So I do have a timer set, so. Um, so I am here on behalf of the faculty, the administration, and all of our making first holders, to please our students, our staff, our parents. You know, I definitely want to give a shout out. Our leadership team that we have, our community, our community, our 113, both our building reps. So here we go. I also have hard copies here because sometimes with technology goes out, I want to be prepared. So on our very next slide, it just shows the demographic that we currently have at CACA field entry. Something to take note of when we look at the language spoken, it indicates that we have 455 for our student enrollment. That way, we are preschool, middle grade. When I look at K's and five, we are currently at 372. The very next slide is about student data and with this slide, we are looking at i-ready, which is the typical and the stretch growth. And something to notice when looking at typical growth, that is the growth that we look at for students to obtain for their placement. If their current grade levels, the stretch growth is looking at students that are below grade level. And what they can hopefully attain to reach their grade level proficiency. I know that there have been a lot of information and questions asked. So this year, we're looking at our goal. We're looking at for the typical role, which is where they are for their grade level. We're looking at that between 60% and 75%. And for the stretch will be 30% across the board. Our very next slide, there's a couple of things I'd love to highlight. One of them is our common practice. And for us, it needs to be our FDA data does not currently need to take them to third or fourth or fifth grade. And we know we can attribute that to a lot of different things, whether it's keeping back in the classroom, you know, group funding, all those kinds of areas. But the theory is actually we wouldn't be looking at to what some of our C D data comes to. And there are certain places where staff talk about things that they would like to have. And so when you see there, I have some star points. Which is the non-advised peer observation improvement laws. The master schedule is set up for them to have collaborative time in their planning, but it doesn't allow them to see their actual peers because they have the same planning about the kid. So I know that time is something of essence when it looks at, when we look at the CACABE learning community. So making sure we have our things in place, looking at what professionals know and what's going, looking at making sure we have the tier two and tier three things in place for intervention. Currently, our natural scale only allows them an intervention for 30 minutes. Now, we know we have multilevel learners, we have social education, and then when we top all of that off, we're making sure we're supporting our ESPs and our teachers with their goal. So this is our common practice. What does the time look like in the day to support the teachers are asking for, which also reflects on our C D data. And I'm going to see their peers during the workday. Our next two slides are kind of similar. We're looking at the books on the reading and professional development and math. They both start off with the time that we have allotted for our smart wins. There are seven this year. Out of those seven, we get three and a half of the building to support teachers' professional development. September 21st and October 26th are two days that were already utilized and those went to focus on Common Core state standards as well as different areas in i-ready. The other 3.5 allow our teachers to have some P O C time. So as I mentioned, time is one of our areas that our teachers would love, right? The thing about not to get is the people about rotations, supporting taking an intervention. And so our goal is this year, this is the difference because usually looking at the list of framework, we look at percentages for like below grade level. We say we're moving the demographic by 1.5 or low to 2.0, or we would say we're moving by like 12%. This year, we're looking at the actual points, which is going to be individual. It is not a grade level based rating already. So what that means is that we are looking for a minimum of 25 points for each of the business students. And we think about equity and equality and we think about moving the cohort of the grade level versus where kids are, we get that very, very specific level. So let's say if you have 370, that's what I'm not i-ready now believing. Their goal in the next frame would be to meet. So what that does, we're looking at still right tier ones, tier two, tier three. That's the way that information comes out already. But now they're very specific. This map, same thing, 103.5 smart one label professional development. The last thing we will have coming up, I believe, in January, we'll focus on the FDA training for our teaching. They did September 28th, we use for professional development, all buildings came together. They kept it for that one in October 26th, they use for, to be breakout sessions for grade level. Something I would like to highlight here is the district elementary math P O C, Mr. Sample has been instrumental in this and working with teachers. And making sure that they have support in front of that pilot. We have a lot of students who can either participate directly or indirectly with the map pilot. As a lab of passion, low income that way, but we're still like at that time, that hundreds of all 3.5 smart.
Can I, can I ask a question about the number, the 25? If you can turn your timer off if you want. The 25 points, is that? Is that a year's worth equivalent to a year from? Of wherever that kid is?
So the 25 points come from teaching and learning. We receive that all school, the expectations all create the show of 25 points. And 25 points doesn't necessarily mean it's a 1.5 years growth because it's been a significant scale. So if I have a student that you could work on maybe like these numbers and proper thing, competition things like that, depending if it's math or reading. That's one point cannot be enough to make that 1.0 jump. But it gives some data that kids are moving. The goal of the minimum is 25 points. But they don't always equate. Now, if it's a student entirely capable, the 25 points can be astronomical, right? But it all depends on where that student already is on the scale, but it can necessarily equate to a 1.5 or 1.0 jump.
Okay, all right.
But it could, depending on where they are, they take the first test, right? If they're above grade level or below grade level.
I guess, yeah. Somebody say point you're talking about scales for. Correct? And, you know, my question is, why don't we just use what I already provides in terms of typical growth and stretch growth? I mean, why aren't, why isn't the goal to, you know, that every student should get typical growth? And then students that are, you know, a couple of grades above the line, achieve stretch growth, which to me is more understandable from the, to the public than, as public soccer, I mean, sketchwork ones, that's pretty down deep in the weeds. So this, I guess this is a, it's probably a question that her doctor demo probably, because, I mean, everybody was doing this kind of thing approach. And I just think we should be you know, using the growth goals, the growth, and so anyway, that's. I probably want to have a meeting with her about that whole subject because I think that's easier to, for people to comprehend that than.
And you know, I think that's a great point, but I also wanted that and I'll, my colleague as well. I know at the district, we're looking at the 25 points off the board. But I do know that all of us as principals, we always aggregate our data to see who is the grade below, to be grade below on grade level. Which the staff is aware of and they pull the plan. So, but no, yeah. Absolutely. All right. All right, social emotional learning and mental health. So for CACABE, we worked with Dr. Brooks and looking at what social home site, right? To support that, that's up in mass for the P E data. And so this year, we still have this role of 100% of our staff within the social emotional. And there's some of the areas to break down into. This is one of the books that I got the staff with interviews for their journal and they're talking in the field some time. When staff have that opportunity to discuss one about social emotional, that also helps support the students. As we know, with our district, we're in the leader, so they implement them and they keep things going hand in hand as well. I'm trying to watch the timer. Okay. Raise and equity. You know, the goal of 100% of our staff are working in your identity. We have a PD based faculty team. We have a raise equity. We also have more individuals that will be looking to offer to that goal. We want to make sure that we have an ESP and everyone up off the board that can be there for that. We also look to make sure that we're supporting implementation and what it's called, which is raising equity policy as well as to step in our commitment to practice of race and equity and anti-racial education. The books you see here are books that I purchased this summer for our staff that they have, that means connection to their identity, that they can improve the field free time. These books came about during the distance learning. There were other books that started putting out. So for the last three years, I've been getting the books. And making sure our staff have, we can use, we can use, and they can, we can read through and talk about. Our next slide, celebration, my favorite slide. I've had it in my whole time here. There are things on here I couldn't even get on here, but I think one of our biggest celebrations is receiving the OFSI grant for the 15 year old CACABE. We use that grant to support math and ESP. In order to receive that grant, there's a couple of meetings you attend prior, meetings you attend after you get the grant. Follow back up to show how you spent the money, how to support kids, what it's got to look like. It's connected to i-ready. We also had to submit our complete sit plan with some additional thresholds. Where it had to be approved by the state and we got approval and we're awarded $40,000 for this grant. So I think that's a huge celebration for providers in the world. It helps supplement the thing that we know we have going on the champion. With really that direct instruction comes from the teachers and we get key to the, from the students and with the i-ready data and to involve them to make sure they can be successful in the next step. Another celebration is our monthly winners that they start and successful in 130 languages. This is exciting because we have always had, we're going to be discussing it. And so if I click on the button, we click it, it can listen to them, whether it's an early release update, whether it's a new, whether it was about weather. So this is all the celebrations, we always make sure we will use the word what's happening. Our i-ready lesson being completed by students, students are completing the lessons that we know both work and support will be doing our ready, right? Already is really structured at that point. So having the medians through those lessons and getting from the road, what it looks like, getting from there with the sound and all the things. I know those things that the screen and animation, it really helps. But I believe we had 111 lessons that were completed last month. But students are excited, they're involved. I know there's incentives that have been given by like our literacy interventionists, but that's a celebration. Our academic academic goal folder, we just need a map. So along with the 25 points this year, there's a template that often can proceed. And what it does is it shows where their current score is and what they want for their first test. Then from there, it shows where the next school would be, which in fact, and the students actually write out what they need to get there. Like, for example, now I may need to, I don't know, work on my short bathroom. And with these forms, parents will also receive a copy of them at the fall conference. This is a celebration because the goal of it now, the student goal, parents, teachers, and students. And as we go through our i-ready check, the progress monitoring, we can celebrate where they are. So that's another celebration. And in our partnerships and enrichment, there's so many, I didn't even get to put them on my hand. Community from school, we have Mr. Pirate share, who really helps with she got bringing things that you don't necessarily have the funding for, or our tables, including the clothing. That's exciting. The IRS comes in and they support students that are into the country and getting with the baby, baby in the library. Always appreciate IRS. Didn't use the whole, that is something CACABE you. When I first back there, we wanted to implement and then of course we had the whole on COVID, we didn't use the whole with that, watching the fifteen and dance. And the gym was amazing, robotics director Larson comes and now two robotics that we have a fourth and fifth grade teacher that's support with that. Champion, that one was before an accurate turn or whatever, during I talk about the unit that supports. Having the parent go off the top of the thing and what you really think of under this, it's been so helpful. So we celebrate having that. And then the sound discipline, right? Having them help support the representation. And we are the things that we need to do based on membership policy at every grade, at world supporting attendance. We actually have a lot of building leadership team meeting, we have found the district mayor. So we're looking forward to what we're looking at, whether it's for our school charter. And make sure that we have all the things we need for incorporating our student data and all of our next steps. Another celebration I want here is that they do the act, the parent advisory committee, Mr. Anderson, who's in the communication, she is a parent in my school. Whether it's talking about the hook there or the different things that we can do. Have a go with snack happen when the meeting comes in. For the family commission of the pack of possible celebration because they are the most, what parents need or what they want. So the one part of the mission. And if you have any questions, thank you for your time.
Misha, just one question about the OFSI grant. Do you use the funding for staffing or?
The budget is broken down with staffing material or any type of P D L that I may need to provide. So I have a couple of things that we budgeted for, I will put them first on. And then we budgeted out and then of course, as we go through and use the funds, if we need to make a judgment, we do. Because I have to attend meetings throughout the year and at the end of the year and we adjust to show what was going to work or not. So I have three areas.
Just like I had, I wanted to do your celebration, but I think it was really excellent is that that's, that's, are the best science scores out of here in the grade. And CACABE doubled literally from, I think around 21% to 39%. Not only that, it's, it's above the state average and, you know, given that we know all the access are, like, pretty much directly to, you know, income levels, anytime, and my, the changes I've been there occasionally, we will be above the state average. But in this case, we have to do that. So the elementary was above the state average. So. And I think that's due to regular, you're learning that and also the science and the science. The fifth grade teacher did a great job of implementing the science curriculum this year and, and the results show. So just another one I add to your.
Really have stepped up to a present, we come to science and, and we're firing that and we're looking for our next professor of science.
Doctor, I do have one more question. I'm curious around, I'm always thinking about S E L mental health. I'm so curious around kind of how those conversations are structured. I know that you said you're, you've been working with someone. So how are those structured and then have, like, how you see the benefit? Benefit or not, like, what kind of have the outcome of some of those conversations been?
So in the past, what we did for three and two years, we were both from during smart one, they showed us on practice, not in the, so the goal was maybe would have maybe Dr. Brooks come on other Wednesday, but on smart one stage. But some of the books, like the social emotional book, staff and pool, and I have something that I will connect with them and they can look at the P O C time or even staff meeting time. I think the conversation, and this is like the real thing, and I think they've been really awful, taking home Dr. Brooks' perspective. And I think it also reflects the T D data, I know Dr. Borshane's shared percentages on, on staffs, the Irish, they write that that are willing to change their colleagues. And then giving into what change looks like. We all know changes in the community, but I think that they've been going pretty well. But usually it starts with a prompt or some type of activity or reading. I know sometimes in P O C, when I see the notes, they share their collaborative notes, they're already having conversations and repeated the meeting to have it, whether it was my building, that's why I'm building leadership team now that we'll have the data to move on, just from what we're digging through more ways to support that. And then we found the full model, pushing for, but it's usually just like basic one-on-one without Dr. Brooks, right? Just unstructured, here's your question, let's be back, you know, we're talking points and maybe share, like, we really do what we can do. Sometimes a one-on-one conversation with new people, but literally it's nothing that is super structured without Dr. Brooks, because she hasn't heard of him this year. But it's something that I think the staff, I think it's easy to go to this, then is I think we're aligned with that, it's like, will we change?
And it's, sorry, this is the last question. You know, ultimately, you know, I think about engaging in social emotional learning practices as an individual. Ultimately, the goal is that, one, we become more socially just aware, right, emotionally aware and cognizant. And also that it translates into how we're interacting with peers and then of course, tripling down into the ways we're trying to engage with young people and asking them to engage. So kind of, have you seen that trickle down yet? And, yeah, have you seen it yet?
I would say, yeah, there are some good examples when I think about, when we really think about learning community and our kids and our parents and the empathy and all things come about. The one thing about CACABE, they love it from beginning to end. And that is something that's undeniable, but I, I do see it. I see it with implementation of new year. Some of the things that the teachers do is they're there on master schedule a lot for S E L time. Whenever I do a walk around, those are the different activities we give kids opportunity to like really point out how they're feeling or why they're feeling that way. I know in our front office, I know Mrs. Meyer, office manager, and the founder, our secretary, on the back of our path, eventually come in. We have, we use, what do we call it, emoji bases for kids. And then we have the words like, are you happy? Are you, are you very happy? You know, and them encircling, we don't circle a lot of ones, which is three, you're two, four, five, which are happy, are very happy. So maybe it translated because they're talking about it, but like, hey, I'm a four, I'm happy. So I think it's been taking place, especially with the new years being visible and yes, and people seeing. And I just, it's not a great, you know, and it's not something we've ever talked about. I gotta give them 100% credit, but I can see a difference with that.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, members of the board, thanks for having me. Nice to be here. First, I want to start off and thank my team at Four to Come Up, first year administrator, and I'm very fortunate to have a great team to help support our, getting our sit plan in place, just building that up. So for multiple stakeholders at grade level. And our specialists have done a really, our interventions have a really great job of collaborating. So this is not just my work. This represents the work of our building. So with no further, further ado, I'm going to get started here. So our total population is about 343. This slide represents the breakdown of of our, of our total student population. One thing that's so long here is that we have a high percentage of Spanish speaking students, which is about one third. And I'll touch on that when we get into the next slide. 187 English is another speaking. We have 20 and then notably, we have 65 other languages represented. And then the next slide, we talk about i-ready and stretch growth. So for the 2021, 22 school year, we were at 33% and so the goal is sure is at 40%. So moving that up. And our stretch growth also increased up to 15%. So, and that's for third grade and then for fifth grade, last year, 51% of the shared, about nine percent to six, to 60%. And then the stretch will at 20%. And then for i-ready, for math, we're looking at last year was 33%. And then this year, moved that up to 40% and then our stretch growth, growth up to 10%. And then with the grade last year, 35%. And this year, we're moving that up to 42%. The information, we done two things that are notable on there is we have a total of 39% of ELL students at level one and then developing, we have at three, at 49. Just wanted to point that out. And then for problem of practice, our third graders, our third to fifth graders are reading levels are below a grade level. Really, it's just, the big issue with that is that we're learning is that a lot of students are lacking foundational skills. So we're really putting a lot of work in with phonics and letter recognition. So we can really getting high quality instruction and working with our interventions to really make sure that our, our targeted interventions are good. One of the things that was apparent last year is that we'll be very intentional of making sure that our intervention groups are taking place in that as a last resort. Those, those, we're, we're doing our best to not because of coverage issues. And I know last year that was a huge issue is that we're really being intentional making sure those groups continue to happen. So really spending a focus on equity, integration, collaboration and a functional approach that supports the whole, full student. Our theory of action that are difficult, high quality differentiated instruction, where to see an increase of up to 1.5 years of growth on the, on the pass. There was a question from the board wanting to know if the S E L is a benchmark assessment and we're using that as another dear point with our i-ready. So focusing on reading and professional development. So fully implement i-ready reading requirements with professional development, very evidence-based, K-PY reading interventions. Again, I, I feel like we're really blessed. We've got a really good reading intervention team in terms of serving those students. So really putting a focus on making sure that we're working on building capacity with staff. Having ongoing discussions regarding the expectations and importance of this initiative will help increase these percentages with timeline tasks. So if you look at the, the table to the right, it gives a breakdown of where students are with timeline task. And so we're really focusing on both for i-ready map and reading to make sure that there are 45 minutes of targeted time on, on that each week. And so we're, we're continuing to build capacity across across that. So using MTSS, our team to reason, watch some help benchmark assessments, fall, winter and spring. We also do site where assessments, letter sounds assessments, i-ready reading data and reading intervention groups of the K-PY groups meet five times a week for a total of 30 minutes. So really being intentional about those interventions to make sure that we're, we're. I touched a little bit of a match on the, on the previous side. So the graph on the left represents the math, like back in the one results. And then graphic on the right breaks down the student timeline task and for my lessons, which I mentioned previously, I had where the capacity to get that up to 45 minutes. But we, for each student. We're currently piloting San Francisco, you know, by school district. Math for third and fourth grade and imagined learning and illustrative math for K for grade skate, second and third and fifth grade. Math interventions, eight, five times a week for 30 minutes, focusing on a number sense of fluency, back fluency. And the GSS team monitors the i-ready math data, beginning with your standards based inventory assessments. One thing that we're really excited about as a school is the social emotional learning and mental health. So this year, our school social worker can really get men. Has been working on implementing a universal screener. It's called the DESAS. The W R O. Student strengths assessment and each student is assessed their early questions. Second, it's a screener that each classroom teacher does for a student. So that takes about one to three minutes to complete. It's a, it's a series of questions that are, that are chat boxes. And based on that information that we've received, we've been, we are able to identify those students that meet S E L supports. And so the graphic on the left are students have completed the screener and the results by S E L category. We're currently at 85% to classroom, to classrooms that are, that still need to be assessed and we'll hope to have that done by Friday and be able to break down and, and get the data sometime in, in early to mid-January.
And this is a point in time assessment?
Yeah.
It's not an ongoing?
It is not. And so what we'll do, based on the, the data that we get from the initial screening, what are those eight questions? We'll take that and, and those students that are flagged that, that need significant support, that there's another another assessment that we can, with another screener that we can use that breaks it down even more. And that's 72 or 70 questions. And so with that information, it helps us look at what types of interventions that we'll choose for that students. And so we're pretty excited about that.
Can I ask a little, whether I have a, maybe a question? Are, what, maybe discussions are being had about the bias that may inherently come in to a universal screener like this? When the adults essentially making assumptions about the young person, the emotional state.
So what is?
Have there been conversations around the bias that could be inherently at play here and then?
We, we have not. But when we get those, when we look at those results, we'll go through and so we don't have a necessary process in place, but you know, it's not just the teacher making a decision. What they, they thought they, our staff thought of the screener and then Ms. Goodman and I will go over those results and, and based on that. So am I answering your question?
Yes, I mean, I think the answer is that there's not really been much thought into bias around a universal screener in this way. So maybe, yeah, okay.
Correct. I, I like the fact that you highlight that. So when I go back to our team, we'll, we'll bring up the conversation. It's a very quick highlight. Thank you. And so these, the graph on the right is a breakdown by grade level. So what we're at. And then we're also making our CE data is linked to, to ruler. We have staff. One of the things that was a big part of this was staff open, this new ideas. Last year, we were at ninety-six percent, the I, the I category. And so we're really working together as a school to focus on working together, sort of it being they were, or them. So it's for working together as a, as a school to improve that. We're working on reinforcing ruler and our staff charter agreements specifically, specifically around feeling safe, which has, which has behaviors of calling people out rather than behaviors of calling, calling people in rather than calling people out. So really embracing that and really for our staff to be able to express thoughts and ideas even if they cause discomfort. And no trust, I'm focusing on high statement. So really, one of the focus this year, you know, it's, you know, the social emotional learning of students, but I also think that there's, that goes hand in hand with the staff as well. So we're really being intentional about working as a building. Recent equity slide. Continued collaboration between our building leads and Dr. Borche, we're, we're working on a currently working on a clock hour proposal. We're, we're kind of having ongoing discussions on, on that. You know, we're establishing our school use, restorative practices to reduce disproportionate disproportionality in our discipline data. Our building, recent, we're having a bunch of meetings, we get together and we're looking at some vertical alignments on on being any, to some district initiatives, being an anti-racist district. And so really being able to work on that and to have some alignment with that. So that's actually really providing some good conversation about that. So we're working on that. And then Swiss data, I am very happy to report that our, our discipline, our referrals compared to last year at this time. We're at, last year for the two thousand twenty-one school year, this time we're seventy-one, we're at twenty-eight this year. Really, you know, when we were looking at the CE data, like student belonging, belonging, we're working as a whole staff to foster sense of belonging, with a commitment to, to be at school to learn. So one of the things that I'm really happy and excited to talk, to say is that when I walk into a classroom, my scholars, why are we here? And they are saying to learn. So that's been a really big thing. It gives them a little bit of ownership on what they're learning. The ruler team has established supports to help increase student participation in their learning and their school. Some of these sports include virtue of the month assemblies, which focus on whole student characteristics versus solely academics, or really about those social emotional components. We have a Fordex school store, and so we've been working on that, looking at the best way to make sure that that's accessible for students. Which are those interested reinforcers. We also have classroom charters in each classroom that students created to help with their buy-in and norms within the learning environment. The next steps with our ruler team is the meta moment. And at this time, we'll tell these students to pause when they're having big feelings and to, to, to be able to most people actually. So we're really doing a good job, I think, in terms of discipline. In terms of we have an overarching zero suspension policy. However, there are things that are going to come up that are big things that are going to have to be addressed. And so we're really, it's a big, it's a big push list this year. It was zero suspension.
I think a question did. So a referral, that's where a student is sent to the office. That basically what?
That is correct. So now all students, we, our students have a FYI for your information category on it. A major or a minor. So really, most of the time the minors are addressed with that's, the goal is to have those minors addressed with that staff person instead of routing them directly to the office, right? Which we know what that looks like. And really, the, and the FYIs are also things that are not necessarily that we would, we would capture. It's just like if we're collecting data on a student that's been identified that is under the evaluation process, it just, it gives us additional data. So that's how we're handling those.
So you can keep all that in Swiss?
Yes, yes, we are. And we're, we're implementing those implemented.
And so let's get, I assume referrals don't get reported in the state, right?
So.
Reported stage is just?
Majors, majors are getting reported.
Oh.
And then we're, yeah, we're also right now working on a system. I know Dr. Borche, and we're working with sound discipline on having Swiss and Cyward communicating with.
Rather.
We've been talking about this for years, but it's fine. It's finally gonna happen, right?
Yeah.
So the days of double entry are, will, will be over with, I hope, sometime in the near future.
Oh, but then there's a certain, those high level categories of referrals would actually get reported in state and the lower ones.
Yeah. Yeah, that's correct. And so some celebrations, we've reached our first progress monitoring, monitoring with monitor, monitoring the iReady diagnostic following January. So we're working on systems in every classroom that will ensure that the forty-five minutes per week are, are being met. We're, we're getting there and it's continuing, having those conversations and working together as a team. We're currently entering our second cycle of evidence-based, based map interventions, interventions for both math and reading. Our school met the deadline for December sixteenth. We're almost at a hundred percent. We're going to be at a hundred percent for our Deser screen, our Deser screener. We have two classrooms, but we're going to have those done by Friday. So happy to report that. Our SLT, our SEL team will be using data to organize students into SEL groups and interventions will begin in January, this coming January. We recently, we've added our, our SCI, our social emotional interventionist position posted for quite some time. We, we've gone, I've been going through, but really just being very intentional about hiring somebody in a position that had experience. So we have a NMSW that will be working into that, will be moving into that position in January, who has experience working with students that have been in, with crisis and has, has navigated through some of the systems and mental health, such as WISE and King County Rock Down. So really excited about that. Another celebration is our champion before and after school program. Currently, we have twenty to thirty students that attend our before school program. And the focus, they have a, with a strong focus with SEL, there's some, some academics, so we have, but the focus is not so, and that academics and it's a really, it's pretty well blended. And then the afternoon we're at between thirty and forty students. So really excited about that. So that's been working well. We have iReady assemblies. We, we purchased these great big trophies. So we have one for the primary K one, two team grade band, and then for the three, four, and five. So each, we, each month we'll have a, we'll look at time on task for iReady. And what we do is we celebrate, we celebrate that. So as you can see on that, it's one of the one of the assemblies we had, and the kids will really get more depth over that. And it really gets them excited to engage in that and really just focusing on, on moving our achievement. So that's it. Any questions?
I'm curious, the, on the lack of a map intervention, the re-intervention, is that implemented in a pullout model?
So, excuse me, three questions. So we are pushing in the classrooms. And so there are instances where I think students can target, you know, as a team, only their decision if we need to bulk it out for smaller groups to really focus on some, on skills, but a brush suppression model.
Okay, so the interventions are coming, they do the patch.
Yes, or we're doing the water, the water, the remodel. So we'll break this up. And that's been very successful. And everybody in our, you know, our, our staff, our classroom teachers have been really open to that. It's been working.
Same thing with math.
Yeah, yes, that's correct. And I think, well, most of the math that are, well, I think a majority of those, the math interventions are targeted small groups. So we have our, our map interventions as a space where we will, will bulk it out for those interventions.
I think that's super quick question. There are sort of practices that y'all are working on implementing throughout the school. Who's preventing the training around that?
In terms of targeted training right now, we have, we per se haven't had any, but we were very intentional about what those, those practices look like. And it's also, the restorative practices are also we're also addressing what harm this caused by bringing, you know, having that as part of the conversation as well. The impact.
I don't know more about that.
Okay, thank you.
Hello. Hi, honey. My name is Honey. I've met all of you already. I mean, we're going to start a presentation for child development and teaching. And before, kind of similar to Michael, I really wanted this app to have ownership. I did start by creating the goals, but I did a refining process through a couple of different staff meetings. I shared out the goals. I made sure that it accurately reflected their needs and some of the staff do not feel comfortable giving feedback. So I gave them anonymous options where they could give me feedback. I wouldn't know who it was from, but it would allow me to see it, to get opinions. And through that refinement, we came up with the goals that we have today. So they are not just my goals, but they are our school-wide goals, so that we're not even on a shelf, but it's something that we will continue to visit with her. Whether it's that meeting or maybe every other staff meeting, so we all have eyes on the goal. Our school demographics and our school population fluctuates up and down. That four oh eight number was what I originally put it there like a few weeks ago. It's different now. I think we're like, is it four twelve, four thirteen, somewhere around there? I wanted to go, I wanted to go based off of our actual numbers and demographics. So however, our Robo S P I and they reflect last year's demographics, so they're not, they're updated, but they are very closely in alignment to the way our student population is looking right now. Our biggest population, as you may know, is, is our, is any question, you know, students. And yes, I'm an idea, like I said, fluctuate. And it goes up and down. I did know there is something about the only spoken, although we have a marker of senior many participants in English that doesn't accurately reflect the ELLs, the population that we have. And I think a lot of our families opt to say that they speak English rather than designated their actual language that they speak. And there was a lot of different unpacking that happened with their decision on that. But we do have a lot of ELL students that are also in that, from getting ninety-six numbers.
So this, so this is self-reported then?
Yeah, we have the, the form, I believe that we always do a year, and it's going to be the off day of my primary language. So even if they're kids, maybe L or sometimes signal things sometimes to identify with wanting to know English. So that number that they English, but space on the population is not.
So the fact that the total school enrollment is different than the number that you have at the top? It's just indicating that some of the families have chosen two languages?
Correct.
Is that, okay.
Well, each family, I believe primarily they pick the primary language. So that number, I believe, and I could absolutely wrong reflect the primary.
Okay, but you, I mean, you have four fifty-two as your total enrollment here and top you have four oh eight. So I guess.
That number.
Oh, yeah. Well, I was assuming it was because.
This is each family one, just another primary. Yes, on there, I mean, certainly they allow, they have process. Those are primarily with this reason. But this particular information includes preschool and is what families.
And it would be interesting to see how many of these are by them and we're not giving them in this data.
Um, similar to the other schools, something I noticed about our iReady, both reading and math, there's typical ten percent growth in every area or less than percent growth. So we are moving, but we're slowly moving along in every area that you look at, whether it's the typical or the stretch growth. In math and reading, all of them go for like approximately ten percent or less than ten percent growth. Also, our ELL population, if we look at it the way we structured our ELL intervention this year, because most of our population is marching or developing, rather than do a full-on pullout model or a full-on pushing model. We ended up offering for a blind model where the parents keep pushing and the yellow teacher does pull out and the yellow teacher does pull out for all of the level one yellow students. And then she also does go teaching with certain teachers because the demographics for our yellow population would be better served in the classroom rather than being out of the classroom with I'm trying to remember, with glass strategies and other like hands-on interactive strategy that are beneficial not just for yellow learners, but for all learners ultimately.
So are you moving more, is more of a happening, being push in?
That's, yeah, the hope, yeah, the hope is to do a full-on pushing because it doesn't really, to do a pull-out doesn't really serve all of the needs of all the students where to do a pushing. Well, it's it's a little more heavy of a load to lift because it's, you know, bringing teachers in, bringing the parents in, bringing the yellow teacher in. You know, collaboration, we need time, we need, you know, professional development, we need like agreements and everyone, you know, collaborating together. But to get the most bang for your buck, you mentioned all of our students, the best model would be pushing. And then the benefit of pushing is when we're doing glass strategies and we use the ELL strategy, it might just benefit the ELL students, but it's also going to benefit all of the non-ELL students as well. And our special education as well. Okay, our overall, so I made a typo and I apologize. I started my sentence. I thought I had finished it, but no, there you go. So our problem of practice, I developed it originally. And then like I said, I presented it to the teachers because I also wanted them to have ownership of, you know, what I perceive based on the data that the problem was practice was. So although it says overall leading comprehension flow, there is a missing part that is due to a lack of high-quality instruction, hopefully stronger practices. And when I say high-quality instruction, what I mean by that is like teaching practices and learning environments that are standardized, evidence-based, you're engaging, they're differentiated, totally responsive, and data-driven. So a big part of that is also PLC, not just, you know, PLCs that we need, but PLCs that we need in an evaluative cycle period that allows us always to pinpoint on the need that we need to address. So in order for us to overcome this problem of practice that we have, the hope is that if we implement, or the goal is that we implement high-quality instruction coupled with culturally responsive practices, we will see improvement in our student learning growth and social emotional development. And I believe that social emotional development and learning are partners. They go one-on-one. The student is not, you know, where they need to be emotionally. They are not able to engage or present, you know, present their actual self. And then when I say culturally responsive strategy, this is like it is the most complex thing that you can explain. But what it really means is just having that self-awareness to having searched approach, teaching that connects students' culture, that connects students' language, life experiences. Again, it goes back to differentiation. If we are not serving the needs of all of our students and we're only isolating, we're serving just some of our students, then in the data, it will reflect. Then in the data, it will reflect just that remains out. So culturally responsive, you know, teaching or strategies are not that complicated. It's really honed in on being aware of the students that you have attended, that you have the cultures in the classroom. Um knowing whether they're yellow or not, knowing, you know, and strategies and tools. So a lot of culturally responsive strategies. Being culturally responsive is to be aware of what you have, what you have in the demographics that you're serving. Um our focus for I ready, I'm sorry, our focus for reading. Is and the way that I got our focus for reading, um I think I kind of made a little bit of a cycle on that as well is um. I really wanted to hone in not on the above part, but on the early on and the on, but looking at. Our I-ready scores when we met during our first staff meeting, a lot of the features consumed into um I-ready comprehension score. So by June twenty twenty-three, our overall I-ready score. Um reading comprehension score will increase from twenty-four percent on grade levels for forty-four percent on grade level in where I found that specific number where. The placement by domain when I already placed the entire school and we look at the bottom, there's a sub-section. Um our phonics, our phoneme awareness is okay, but when you keep going down, our vocabulary, our comprehension is not where it needs to be. And then particularly our comprehension is something that a lot of teachers value and feel like if we can help our students grow in that particular area, it'll build their. Vocabulary, it'll build their phonics um overall as a pattern, understanding, going to learning, difference in being able to learn.
So I'm putting an earlier version of this, it said reading comprehension, reading, and this version reading comprehension has been removed. So reading comprehension is a sub-part of the overall reading I ready that you're going to focus on that one. So it sounds like reading comprehension should be.
Yeah, I, yeah, I thought it was on there, but um it is so instead of looking at the whole, it replaced at some point, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so it's got to change.
Sorry. Um instead of looking at the overall, I think we wanted to really pinpoint on one thing that would help us grow rather than with missing higher scores. Be more vague and not really isolate this.
Uh but I think, I mean, we had the the growth, the student growth goals, which are overall of 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 that. And then, and then you're saying in order to get those pumped up, this is the one we're going to work on this year.
Um in terms of math, um similar, I think um it also got removed. Um by June twenty twenty-three, our overall I-ready math, um we chose when we were looking at it at the staff meeting that we were beginning to develop. We did look at all of our math goals, but what we particularly honed in on was our numbers and operations that were the lowest. Again, same as I read reading, you didn't have the entire goal, then you go into domains. And when we looked at the domains, we felt like if we, you know, that was where we were the lowest. If we focus in there, then it kind of expands with all the other domains and the rest of the students. Um so in that particular domain. Um we would love to see an increase from eleven percent on grade level to thirty percent on grade level. And I was very intentional about the percentage of growth that we would like to see this. Things like that are specific fields and to give it a big gap of increase, not realistic. And most of the time you will see an increase that will above the small percentage that you cut up there. But it's also celebration and we know that it moves from slow. So in order for it to grow at the right rate, a lot of teachers. And I myself feel like we need to aim for a practical goal, knowing that we'll always most likely achieve that goal.
That's what I could ask. So so this review is thirty percent as a pretty realistic goal as opposed to, I mean. Sometimes it must be is make a stretch ball and you don't hit it. Okay, fine, you're getting close to it. Okay, so this is.
Yeah, that aim is it will always, and that's something that we had a conversation about, is it will always most likely go above that thirty percent. It will increase more than that, but for our students to celebrate and for us to track the progress and to even be able to see. And I also don't want this to be the only goal we have. Like I said, I really was up to read this at my sick, maybe when we come back from winter break or maybe if summer is in a break. And we evaluate our goal because that's what it is, getting data and good P L P practice to getting data and new goals and need for new um. Achievements. So thirty percent looks small, but I guarantee you in the grand scheme, it's a lot faster than you see. Social emotional. So for our school, um I had two goals in terms of our students. Um when I arrived here, I also got a social emotional interventionist. And I chose her um over a lot of other people because she had more years of experience above me. And I think it was beneficial that she also had a lot of P D I F experience as well and it kind of coupled very well um with me going in being brand new principal. So one thing we noted, like right off of that, with a lot of our students is a lack of social, emotional, not even goal. But more so identification, like a lot of our students not able to identify their emotions, identify their feelings, tell us where the feelings are coming from. They were familiar with the new leader, but they weren't necessarily familiar with, you know, being able to express their feelings. In the correct way. And a lot of times you would see them being able to point to a color, but not understand. They're part of what got them to that color. So at our school, the goal that we came up with as a whole staff. With by June twenty twenty-three, fifty percent of our student population will be able to identify their emotions with feeling that new leaders and fashion wants by they feel that way. And a big part of the way with an agent that is not just, you know, put a heavy influence on the new leader, but um we got character strong this year. And what character strong does is it identifies with specific um character trait every single month. Um we have the type of the month award to celebrate the student that shows that the most um when the student. You know, is in trouble, the first thing you do or perceive trouble, the first thing you do is we identify the leader, we speak through and all the issues. And at the very end, you just need to hear again. Um all teachers have their own leader and their own versions of the leader that goes that. That goes outside of the poster that we gave them and they practice it regularly in classrooms, whether it's in the morning or midday or afternoon. Um another thing that we do have is for our staff, um I looked into the D E data. Data at the beginning of the year and one thing that, you know, everybody collectively um agreed upon and would like to have some change. There was communication in staff support and staff S B L initiatives. Um and like I said, I'm fortunate to have picked an F L interventionist who had this experience on me because she came up with. A wonderful um program called that hyperpaus and similar to our student hyperpaus will give students so that. They know that they can stay responsible and respectful. This one is peer-to-peer. Where um their peers are able to give them a type of paw and it says something, you know, very kind about something good that they see. And we started with, you know, September, not having a lot because everybody's frightened with the idea. And then now we're at like. Overflow of the bucket. And now we have to think every single week for somebody to um earn a prize. So similar to the students, we also have at the staff store. They can, you know, once their name is drawn, we, the person said about them and they have the opportunity to go and they go a prize out of the staff um. Sorry, sorry. Um something else I do for staff or we all do together as a staff is um the year, every single staff, we do a check-in. Um when Mary, she's the social interventionist, and I have an opportunity to walk around the building in the morning or in the afternoon just to check in. Say you need to check in, have an apple system where somebody's in the red, they have a red apple, put it out by the door. And it's like, okay, what do you need? I see my apples. So I'm just to see if maybe they need a break and step away, they need to, you know. Kind of taking it themselves. Um I also have anonymous, no tangible form opportunities because again, I know it's staff, the staff are very comfortable with, you know, as a whole group. Sharing other opinions. So I try to give them anonymous opportunities and that has worked out really well. I've gotten a lot of, you know. Different feedback and things because there's no barrier between them being able to say what you want to say and um. A fear of any type of repression. Um our race and equity are. So similarly to F L race and equity, um I absolutely cherish from the bottom of my heart, and again, race and equity, I mean. Emotional, I mean, all I predict one triangle or one, you know, circle that doesn't need one without the other. And the reason why my race and equity goal looks like this, um by June twenty twenty-three, the staff will identify the three bias needs. We each hold in the three common biases um among staff, um that will also be able to define equity. But the next was five twenty twenty-three. Um I intentionally chose this because as a new administrator going into a building that has been well-established. I can't go in with the perceived notions of this is what your problem is, this is what I think your problem is, this is what I'm noticing. But I would rather us have a conversation where by the end of the year, we all as a group can say when we define race and equity. This is what I mean, when we define what a bias is, inclusive and that goes that we can all agree because it's around work. And change, whether it is um climate or culture, does not really take place until five years into an administrator's journey. So this year I just wanted to be my foundation, my groundwork and um a part of why I also came up with the biases. Because again, we don't know what we don't know. And what we're going to do is we're going to take um the Harvard Inclusive Bias assessment. And I know a lot of staff will not feel comfortable sharing what comes out of it. So I am working on again in an anonymous way for the scores to be able, you know, for them to be able to share those so that we can again. You know, have a starting point. And I myself have taken it and I myself were incredibly surprised at, you know, my results. So I tried to also lead with that and letting people know, you know, this is not about you and the nature of anything wrong. It's really about like, you want to be able to say, you know, the issue that we have into the perceived bias that we're, you know, putting out in force to the population and then start. Addressing it, you know, and address it, then we will be just being this move of not moving. Celebrations. Um again, I really love F L and things that, you know. Relative to that area, so I didn't really focus a lot on academics because I believe academic achievement will happen regardless of what we do. They will always be there, they will always grow. But what we're doing right now that I agree we have. We ending, we're refining growth, this is nothing that are perfect, is our F L lessons are being provided by both uh. Teachers and F L interventionists and a big part of that is they care strongly or have material, they have the curriculum, all they have is for them. And what character Sean does, they give some entitlement for the curriculums. Or the entitlement for the lessons or a particular character trait, which is the one that's always seen for everyone. Um we have. Behavior against the counter and increasing referrals. Like I said, new school, new atmosphere, you might have a lot of things. And we particularly, we had a problem um with a high number of referrals being written about students without, you know. The proper knowledge and understanding of dangers for minors and part, a big part of that was in what kind of book the camera back for me was. In October, we had a total of seventy-three referrals. One month, we had a total of seventy-three referrals. Looking at those referrals. Maybe ten, twelve of them are legitimate in terms of an actual referral and looking at all of them, only one considered a major, the rest were like minors. But again, a big part of it is the environment, new people, you know, children having boundaries. Us needing to, you know, bring it back together and figure something out that works for us. And what we did, the behavior tickets was, um the teachers actually developed a behavior matrix last year and how they were going to address a lot of these issues. So we went back and did it. And with the behavior tickets allow the, especially for educators, who are the ones that, you know, students who are also structured in the environment. It would allow them to take note of something that happened and bring it to me or our social emotional interventionist and then we'll be on the barriers to give feature. The future, they let us know. Um after we've done that in October. Our referrals dropped down to twenty-one in November and we are at eleven this month. So I don't know why I put that up. It's a good worth of celebration. Um that does not mean that we are done and that our problems have disappeared. We still have a lot of, there's a lot of educators and we teach that we need to take care of. But a lot of it begins with, you know, us reflecting on what we're doing. Are we aware of our bias that we're aware of, you know, some of the things that we're writing students up for? Is it really worthy of a write-up? And are we really identifying all of the students or, you know, only certain students? Because that's the name, we're petted every single year. Interesting, you know, um eighty percent of the referral write-ups feed in one class. In that class, the path of the substance is that we should live out long-term. So there's a lot of things that are happening behind the scenes that are we need to, you know, assume emotional hours. And it tells us that we need to be a little bit more and we'll support your students in that. Um something again, I'm really happy about in our social emotional intervention is the one that's needed is our vitamin, parat, to be a training. To the management and sort of practices. That is a part of why our stuff dropped a lot because I've heard it felt like they need support. But they need just need support in terms of, you know, me or the social emotional interventions being there, but they need a strategy, they need the tools, they need this more. Okay, student doesn't listen to me, but my name is that, I better write them up. And we're hoping to blow that in terms of, you know. Not that we don't want to move away from referrals, but if we can work on what are steps that we can take if this problem happens. If that, if that didn't work, that's the next step. Um is what we're against moving towards. Um we have monthly connections to family, so I have something called principal, um patient with a principal every single one. Um funny enough, I was in shock with how many little people show up. But it turns out, it's enormous. And it turns out like I have like twelve, fifteen families that consistently show up. And out of those families, now I have like solid amount of volunteers that are invested in school, that are willing to come in, that are our support lunchtime. So I'm okay with it now because I understand that's the way it works. No emotional attachment there. So and then um. Down there, like I said, academic achievement is incredibly important, but there are a lot of things that we need to work on before, you know, thinking more suits for, you know, highly. Like real pretty numbers. So right now we can say with confidence that every kid's the person we are above, they're being um I ready for versus. Um are on grade level in reading. So that's a growth from last year. I'm sorry to say that I don't have the exact numbers for you. Question.
So do you use Swiss to?
Um the goal did not have Swiss. We are getting Swiss, though. We just finished signing the um agreement and getting our like credentials. So we can start uploading, although I'm not going to lie, I might not be uploading all of the issues of those referrals if we can fine tune them down. So we didn't really want to upload, you know, being too loud.
Yeah, it sounds like, what it sound like, um yeah, you don't need to upload the minor ones anyway, so. The other questions are the other just add to the celebrations I think that I think the so both. Happy you're into the elementary had outstanding degree science scores last year, which exceeded the state average, which is great work for them. The folks that are working the science curriculum maybe as well, so.
I have a few general questions that I'm going to come in time, um so I'll maybe kind of work that in another time. They're also kind of general. Um but I I just want to say that this um this is really refreshing. Um this presentation, the goal that you set, the realistic, like the tangible pieces that are so focused. Um I'm really grateful for that. I've I've that's actually been something that I've been wanting to see since I've turned the board and and I I feel really grateful that that you did that. And I I know I talk a lot up here about social emotional learning and most of that is because, you know, the 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 scales are heavily weighted towards academics, right? And so it's not that I don't care about those academics, it's that I focus on social emotional learning if I'm trying to this go back. So I'm really just so appreciative that you got that mindset of those three worked in cannon together. Um I'm a former leader of that's true as well. And then the last thing, I just want to say, thank you for being intentional about using the culture responsive practices in your goals. I think that that needs to be a more focal point, every single one of our our goals. And so so thank you so much for just all of this. Okay, all right. Um thank you all so much. It's six oh nine. Um so we will go ahead and move to adjourn our meeting. All in favor?